Eighty-five by drug traffickers while serving as an undercover drug agent in Mexico. And whereas the red ribbon symbolizes a commitment to a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, no use of any illegal drugs and no illegal use of legal drugs. And now therefore I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, we hereby proclaim the week of October 22nd, 2018, as Red Ribbon Week in Sioux City, Iowa. And call upon all citizens to join the City of Sioux City, Sulan Care's Nail Club, in our community-wide effort to promote this year's theme, "Life is Your Journey: Travel Drug-Free." Thank you for all the good work you do. We'll say a few words here if you would.
All right, yes. I'm going to do something you, right? Now, Huddy, go ahead and pass those out to everybody up here. So as stated in the proclamation, Red Ribbon Week honors DEA Agent Enrique Camarena, and he dedicated his life to making viable efforts to eradicate illegal drugs in our communities. We thank him and all the people in uniform today who help to keep us safe on a daily basis. Locally, our youth say that underage alcohol abuse is the number-one problem facing them. Our community continues to work to curb underage drinking, as we know that each year approximately 4,700 young people under the age of 21 die as a result of underage drinking. We also know that youth who begin drinking before the age of 15 are five times more likely to develop alcohol dependence or abuse as adults. Therefore, we continually work to increase the age that young people start using. So as Brett has handed out red ribbons to each one of you up front here, all of the red ribbons were made by the Sioux City Young Ambassadors. That was a project that they had decided on and decided to make for all of you here today. And we ask that you wear proudly this week to show your support for a drug-free community. And thank you for your continued support and the safety of helping.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jim, come on up here. We have a commendation that reads, whereas Jim Jung has been a valued member of the Historic Preservation Commission... Designed to preserve historic buildings and required approval from the Historic Preservation Commission for modifications to buildings in the historic districts. Initiating the establishment of the Historic Preservation Week in Sioux City, which is the only event of its kind in the state of Iowa, successfully working to save endangered properties of historical significance from being razed. And whereas Jim shows a true commitment to educating the community on the aesthetic and economic benefits of preserving historic places in Sioux City, and will continue that commitment into the future as a private citizen. Now therefore I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Sioux City, who hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this commendation to Jim Jung on the occasion of his retirement from the Historic Preservation Commission. We wish him the best and thank him for many years of service. We also have a plaque that reads, "Jim Jung, thank you for 16 years of service and dedication on the Historic Preservation Committee Sioux City." And I just want to say personally, Jim, thank you for all you have done. You brought a higher level of attention to these properties and we appreciate it. Say a few words. Okay. I want to face the council. That's good. It's not that I don't like you guys. Two comments right away. They told me I was getting a gold watch. And number two, I saved you guys a lot of money.
And we appreciate it.
No pay, okay? Sometime it'd be interesting to add up all your committees and commissions and the hours that are spent in the year and the money and that. Just a thought. Some quick comments, I'm not going to belabor this, but thank you, this means a lot. And I could never do it without your support, okay? You guys have been behind me and that helps a lot. You chose me, I work for you, and that's how I've led. Just to show you something, how I've led, this is on my business card. I'm convinced that it takes leadership, vision, passion, and commitment to make a difference. And it's that simple. And I think that's what people need to try to do, and that's what I've done. I didn't realize it was 16, I lost track, years. Gretchen, Jim is a staff member, I can only go so far, you're going to have to use your gut. And then the second comment was Marty Doherty, when he was on the council, he said, "Oh, things are more complicated than that." And I thought, "Oh, okay, I'll figure that out." Just kidding, I wasn't... Anyway, that made me figure it out. But I couldn't have done it without the citizens, okay? I've met a lot of people, a lot of great people. I couldn't have done it without the city council. I couldn't have done it without three city managers now. And city staff, there's a whole bunch of people I've worked with that have gone and are still around and keep in contact, but the city staff has been great. And our staff advisors have been great. We've brought up some young people, Charlie Cowell, Par Barnes, and they've moved on to other jobs. That's been exciting, to teach them and lead with them. The commission grew from five to seven to nine members, and I leave the commission in your hands. You've got great people that want to be on it, but it's totally functional. The website, due to Adam Fullerton, has been used as a guideline, and we're in good standing with the State Historical Society and the National Park Service. Retirement scares me. I just move on. I'll move on to some other things. I still want to help the city, I still want to help you all. I'll figure some ways to do it, but thank you for your support, and this means a lot.
Jim, I'm going to add something to this. We couldn't have done it without you.
I'm sorry?
We could not have done it without you. You're giving everybody praise, but you know, it was you that carried it on, and...
But you can't do it alone.
You can't. You know, that's true.
Now I can argue with you. I don't agree with you.
Hey, we're open for suggestions, you know?
It does take a leader, and thank you so much for stepping up and being that leader.
Twenty-three years in the Navy.
Sioux City is more beautiful because of you.
Given the contact, you're connected with the Navy, 23 years with that taught me how to be a leader. And you led the three into situations you did it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Great job.
I just want to say something about the Milwaukee Wiener House. The mayor said he was four years old when he first went there. And my story, and there are many, many stories with Milwaukee Wiener House, no question about it, and the coverage has been good in the media. But my story is, it was the Milwaukee Wiener House where I first learned I was going to be a grandfather. And that's where they took me for lunch and then made the announcement. And then it became a tradition, I kind of lost count how many times I've been to Milwaukee Wiener to learn that I was going to be a grandfather, but thank you for what you've provided over the years. Great to see every time I come in, and it's just really good memories of the Milwaukee Wiener House. I haven't been back with my kids lately. Now I'm coming with the grandkids, actually, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the regular item today, or regular agenda today. Items two through 11H are the consent agenda. We won't vote on every one of those unless it's separate. Roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda or an item under citizen concerns, please state your name and address so it can be entered for the record, and I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is the reading of the City Council minutes of October 15th, 2018. Three is a resolution authorizing EMS Division to accept the donation of 12 lead EKG stimulators and eight CPR mannequins from the Healthcare Preparedness Coalition. Four is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Garrettson Avenue realignment project. Five is a resolution inviting proposal of lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area and announcing an intent to accept the proposal of Clarence Holcomb, and scheduling a public hearing property at 2500 Ogden Avenue. Six is a resolution amending the position classification manual by adding a fiscal operations manager position in the finance department. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing the airport director to apply for an airport improvement preliminary supplemental appropriation grant to fund rehabilitation of taxiway C-South project at the Sioux Gateway Airport. E is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for an elderly and persons with disability project grant to support the cost of contracted service. C is a resolution approving a transit preparation, a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for an elderly and persons with disability project grant for the purchase of one light-duty bus. Eight are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract with Century Fence Company for the Sioux Gate, for the south perimeter motion extending the deadline in a promissory note executed by Lam Arts, who, October 22nd, 2019, for the development of property at 625 Douglas Street. Mr. Moore, you have comments.
Mayor, I have a couple of comments to make on this item. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to amend the main motion to also waive any payments to the city with this one-year extension as provided in the development agreement. And then, so I'd make that motion, hopefully I'd get a second. And then, lastly, I would like to direct staff to look at amending the development agreement to make it a two-year extension as opposed to the one-year, so Lam Arts does not have to come back annually while they're undertaking this monumental task of fundraising. And they're on track, they're doing a great job, it's going to be a real boost to downtown Sioux City. But I think the reality is, it just takes time to do this the right way, and with the Woolies, we'll get it done the right way. So the second part's a direction only. First part is my motion to amend the main motion to waive the, any payments to the city at this time.
Second.
Mayor and council, about a year ago, when the Woolies began this project and we entered into this agreement, and Russ is here, I think maybe he might want to give you a quick update on the status of the project. They've been making great progress, and I thought it was interesting, we had Jim here today and talking about the importance of historic preservation. This is one of Sioux City's most historic buildings, and Councilman Moore is correct, these kind of projects do take a little time to put together all the different components of, whether they're tax preservation grants or tax credits, the different types of grants you can get, and fundraising, so. But I do believe they've been making great progress, and Russ, your honor.
Why can't his motion be the same? I mean, when he said be a motion...
Yes, thank you very much, just a couple moments. It's still a very exciting project and lots of life and vitality. Most of you know this, just a few weeks ago, Gilchrist Foundation awarded us a $250,000 matching capital campaign. Shortly after that, the MURD with $100,000. With that, beginning mid-November, asbestos abatement starts in the building. The people that we're working with, is the company out of Norfolk, and I've lost their name right now, but they're incredible people, wonderful, wonderful people. We have been talking, this is, the learning curve for this has been really fun and exciting and frustrating and all the rest of that, but lots and lots of meetings with people here in town, as well as people all over the country. We are exploring all kinds of things, and we've been invited by other foundations across the country to make application for things like, like what the Gilchrist is talking about. And also historic tax, exploring historic tax credits, as well as new market tax credits. The company has said, we, those are really, really tough, but they feel there might be something in there for that. So, that's what, that's what we're doing. As council was saying, I get talked in Hy-Vee and people will say, "Have you moved yet?" No. Takes a little bit of time, but we all, and we're willing to spend the time to talk to the people and to get it done, so I thank you for your consideration.
No, it's going to be a great addition downtown to Sioux City also, and plus, it's going to be a beautiful historic building when you're done, so it's such a big deal, it's such a plus. So thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, well, it takes somebody like you to do it, so...
What year was this, Russ?
1909.
1909.
Yeah.
That's a great picture.
The restoration of the facade, it will look just like it looked in 1909.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
What?
And Bob will have to eat hot dogs like when we were there, too.
I just wonder if you were a rookie cop that year.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
The attorney would like you to withdraw your motion in your second and reword it, if you would, right?
If it would be okay that we would have direction.
Just an attorney saying, "Adam"?
Sure. To bring back an amended development agreement and an amended promissory note to extend the deadline for two more years. We could have that on the next council meeting, which should be November 5th for a vote.
That was just all done in one, is what she said.
Well, I would like that.
Okay.
Yes, that's fine.
So what do we do with this item?
So then you're going to...
And she'll word it for you.
Or you can defer it, or you could delete the item and we can just put it back on the next council agenda.
That'd be all right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That'd probably be the easiest one.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll withdraw my motion to amend.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, and then do you want to...
Do it, draw.
Move to delete the item?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Gretchen?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
I'm going to abstain now.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
C is a resolution approving an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad for crossing improvements in connection with the Bridgeport West Improvement Project. D is a resolution approving a contract with L&amp;L Builders for the Skywalk Project. Manette here?
Hey, Manette, I just got an email, this is kind of timely, from the new CEO of Mercy Health, saying that their Skywalk is a disaster with the ceiling tiles and his pictures. Is this one, is that on this one?
No, that's not part of this one. The HVAC unit in that section is, the heating comes from the boiler at Mercy, and the air conditioning is separate than that. We've had some issues with that this summer. Hopefully that will be on the next round of replacements. The ceiling, and the ceiling tiles in there are the old 12-by-12 type that we can't buy replacements for at this point in time either. The tile issue, I've been trying to get somebody to repair tiles in various sections of the Skywalk. Everybody is so busy that they're not even interested, so I'm still trying to find someone to take care of that.
Would you communicate that to her?
Absolutely.
That's usually her name.
Sure.
Thank you.
Nine are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing final payment to BX Civil and Construction for the 46th Street Drainage and Paving Improvement Project. B is a resolution authorizing final payment to SAC Construction for the annual utility lining project. C is a resolution authorizing final payment to RH Mullin Corporation for the longline softening replacement project. I need to abstain on that item, please. Ten are applications for beer and liquor licenses, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Eleven, receipt of minutes, see the list come forward if you have any questions.
I do have a question. On the on-premise sales, it says, Biker Nights has got, where is 2500 Keakok Avenue?
It's on the airbase, I think Keakok Avenue is.
It's a hangar down at the airbase.
Okay, so they're, okay, so this is what, for five days, I said?
They're just having a private party down there.
Okay.
Five days is the smallest license we get.
Yep, that's all.
Or the shortest period of time, I should say.
Right, hey, back on Lam Arts, we deleted it. Will that be on our agenda then for November 5th?
Yes.
And we... Weekend today.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the consent agenda. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye. Twelve is a hearing and resolution authorizing request of 48 South to annex land into the city property at 4800 Southern Hills Drive.
I'll move it.
Second. Anyone to be heard? Yeah, come on up. Larry, you can, yeah, Larry or Dan, either one, but come up, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Dan Heizerout at 1969 Elk Creek Road, Sergeant Bluff, Iowa, and I'm the managing member for 48 South Townhomes. Our plan is, I don't know if you have a map of it or not, but we have roughly a six-acre site that is just south of Southern Hills Drive, that we are planning on building nine smaller 12-plex buildings. There'll be roughly 106 units all together when we're completed. We've been working with the city for quite some time now and making sure, the area's currently in the county, and of course for utilities and stuff, we need to get it pulled into the city. With the housing and stuff that's needed now, our goal is to add more house and more homes available for the city's load that's needed, as well as have them be somewhat affordable or cheaper than some of the ones currently there. At this time, our plan is just working with the annexation, and we've been working with the city on final plans here, but we can't really have those approved until we get annexed. So that's where we're at at this time. We've been working with the neighbors and a team of the design and site layout for some time, and we feel we have a good plan in place that we've put together.
Questions? Larry, go ahead.
I live at 4353 Old Lakeport Road, which is to the south and east of the proposed site. We own the property along the entire south side of the development site. There are significant fatal planning flaws with this project. The project is a disaster. I will highlight a few of the significant problems. Planning flaws create major problems that need to be addressed. Some of the problems are, the elevation of the, of a significant portion of the site has been increased by several feet. There are significant issues with drainage issues, and these problems are made worse by the increase in the elevation of the site. The engineer's memo states that the storm water storage is inadequate. I have provided the city with an engineer's memo that identifies many issues with this development. The developers made a number of representations with regard to substantial change in the elevation of the site. Many of these representations do not agree with the facts on the ground. I asked the members of the council to look at the pictures that I provided. The pictures tell the truth, and the pictures do not lie. The pictures were taken from our land and the southeast corner of the site. Our fence, there's a white fence all the way along the south side of the, of the site. Our fence is an excellent yardstick. The fence is between four and a half and five feet tall. The bottom of this measurement along the fence was the ground elevation of the south side of the site before grading, before the grading project started. I recommend the city, the city council members, look at the pictures. They tell you the truth about the change in the elevation of the site. Use our fence as a yardstick. The elevation was raised by feet. Pictures tell you the truth and tell you what happened to this site. I've heard the developer's stories and saw his computer-generated documents. But his stories and documents are not consistent with the facts on the ground. The developer's representations lack credibility. I see the elevated site each and every day, and I know what the developer did with this site. The developer's representations include an email message the day after the plan and zoning meeting. In the email, he stated that the southeast corner of the site shows less than a two-foot increase from the original within 25 feet of the property line. This is the exact location where most of the pictures were taken that I provided. Please refer to these pictures that I provided and compare what you see with the above statement from the developer. As the grading project continued for weeks, I developed major concerns about the developer's plan. As a result, I engaged a local engineer to review the plans submitted to the city by the developer. The engineer identified many issues with the developer's plan, and he feels the grading does not work, and the storm water detention storage is too small. I provided the entire engineer's memo to plan and zoning and the city staff. I agree with the engineer's comments that the developer's plan does not work. The elevated site was raised well above our land. As a result, the developer's drainage and storm water problems will become my problem. Water will run downhill, and it's just not right. Based on the developer's actions or lack of actions, water will run down the hill to our property. I feel my comments should have created significant doubt about the planning for the project. A poorly planned development is not an asset for the city. It is a liability that the city would assume if the annexation moves forward in its current form. I recommend that the city council act and take over the site plan approval process for the development. This approach will allow for public comments and input. As is seen in a lot of smoke and mirrors, if the development moves forward, the city should want the development to be done right. The grading, drainage, and storm water work that has already been completed was done backwards. As of this date, there is no place for the water to go, but substantial grading has been completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can sure address a few of Larry's concerns he had on the project. There was a memo sent from an engineering firm that I believe has been responded to. There was nothing significant or major in the, in the memo that hasn't been addressed. We've sent some information back into the city. We're still working with engineering, of course, in order to make sure everything's compliant, but as far as we know at this point, the designs are sufficient, things are adequate. I don't believe in the memo that came from DGR, there's anything in here that says some of the comments that were, that were made, and in fact, in DGR's memo, in number three, it says, "Overall runoff from the site developed will be less than the current runoff." So even his engineer had said that it's gonna be done correctly. But anyway, there's a response that was sent back in, most of them were pretty small items. We've been, Larry did mention about the site drainage, and that's part of the reason why we need the annexation. We can't tie into the city storm sewer until we get the annexation. So the picture you're looking at, I don't know if you can see that one or not, but there are some retention ponds, detention ponds, between the two property lines that do capture all the site's water. And then that water goes to the west, and then it'll be flowing to the south through lines we're putting in, but we can't put those lines in until we get the annexation. So I believe many of his concerns regarding the storm water drainage will be taken care of once we get that line put back in and relieved. There's also, if it's a document in your packet, but Mr. Del Perdang had raised some concerns about drainage or grading at the planning and zoning meeting. So the engineers through DGR and Olson provided a document that showed before and after site work that was done, and shows pluses and minuses on the site. Part of, I think, the confusion here is, is the site already was 20 feet higher than Mr. Del Perdang's site. There was quite a slope that started from that fence and went, as you went to the north.
Didn't drop off, Dan.
There's nothing that drops off.
Didn't pop off like it does now, it was a gradual grade change. I'm...
And I don't know, I mean, the picture you're looking at now is...
There's any question, Dan? You, you had to put three or four or five feet of dirt in there in some of those spots, right?
There's a couple of spots are about four or five feet, I think it was the max, correct? And there's some spots we dug out about seven and nine on the other side, because the site needed to be sloped. I don't know, Chris, do you have those pictures I sent you earlier today? There's a couple pictures I sent of the site that, that kinda gives you an idea there. That's one shot, that'd be from the east looking towards the west, and then I dropped down to the southwest corner property there. And you can see in the close front of the picture, that's the original grade where those weeds and stuff are, and that's the height almost exactly going across there. I think the point that Mr. Del Perdang is seeing is that, that ridge right there where the building pad's gonna sit, that's not finished yet either. Once the building gets put on there, of course, there'll be more smoothing and stuff done around there, but that site was not changed significantly, it should come across there. Of course, significantly is in the eyes of the beholder. As you can see on that picture, there was retention ponds added along the side between the two properties, and then the rest of the site was graded off and leveled off. So...
So that is your detention pond?
That's one of about four or five. It runs along that side, and the largest one is down in the corner, and there's underground storage as well that holds it.
Talking about the ditch right there. Can we just allow a berm to be a detention pond? Because that's all it is?
It's, it's not a berm, it's, it's a whole pocket swell.
It's a swell, is all it is. It's not, when I think of a detention pond, I think of a, of a over-escavated site that we have everywhere else, that has a tube running out the backside, which I understand this could, but I don't think we... It does, if it does, it's a tragedy, that you could build that, you could hold your water next to, within five feet of your neighbors. We've got, you can't build anything within five foot of your neighbor, but yet you can put a darn detention pond there. Is that right? Because that's wrong if that's the case.
It's not within five foot.
In accordance with the grading ordinance, you shouldn't grade within five foot of the... But you understand, he got his grading permit through the county, he didn't get a grading permit through the city.
He do around here. That's, that's the end of the day.
And I don't believe he's got approved engineering plans at this point.
Okay, but you understand what I'm saying. This is nothing more than a berm, that the water's just gonna sit there and...
Well, he's got a, he's got a, he's got an outlet that connects to his city storm sewer system.
What do you think of when you think of a detention pond, when I say that word?
Most cases, you're thinking of a depression where it's, yeah.
Where it's raised edges on the side and stuff.
That it's, no, that it's sunk below everything else. Yeah, that's what you're thinking of. I mean, he's got a site where he's trying to grade it down, and then he's catching it before it goes onto the neighbor's property. I mean, it's, he's building, he's, yeah, he's banking it up and almost like a, almost like a, like a channel or a flood protection type thing.
What's, what's an underground swell? I'm kinda confused about that.
No, he had underground storage.
What you were seeing on that picture along that side is there's several retainage areas, and that all flows to the west, and then there's a larger pond area to the west, and then there's some underground tubes, 48-inch pipes, that tie a couple pond areas, clear to the west of the property, that tie into the city's property.
Where's the retainage ponds? I don't see it in this picture. It's this long, it's just basically a berm along the fence line if you drive out. Is that ditch? Is that what I'm talking about?
Yeah, there's, there's like a ditch there, and, and it holds so much water, and there's a tube that runs down the next one. So it was a way to hold the water and slow it down as it runs down to the main pond.
Right, except for the problem with that is it's gonna silt in over time, and...
Well, hopefully not, and we'll have to, you know, clean it all out, too.
Well...
And then at the very far corner is where the line will be put in that ties into the city storm lane. But it has, I mean, the engineer's study has been turned in, and the report's been turned in on how the water all flows, and it's within the code guidelines of what the city requires.
So is that operational now with the exception of hooking to the city?
It's operational in that it is, it's stopping any runoff water, it's holding it back from going south. I mean, this, as I mentioned, the site's 20 feet higher than the neighbor's. All the water's always gone south and west.
Sure.
So there's less water going there now, so there's silt fence running along that fence line, and most of the water is caught in those little ponds. And then now, when it rains heavy, we have to pump that water out back down to the south. Otherwise, if it gets too full, it's gonna fail. That's why we need the annexation to get the storm drain put in.
And I think my understanding, Dan, is that they've had water get into the building a couple of times?
No. There was water one time before we even put the silt fence in, way early in the process, that I'm not sure if it came from the site or where it came from, honestly, but we did clean it up. Yeah, there was a little silt about four or five feet. I mean, it was minuscule, it came into the, that little shed building right there, but we did address that right away. If there's been any other times besides that, we haven't been told or cleaned it up, we didn't have any notification.
That's not a real little shed, it's pretty big.
No, it's, it's a shed, yeah, it is, it's a good-sized shed.
Did you have a topo map before you did the...
Yes, DGR performed a topo map before, then we have site after as well, correct.
You have, you have a topo after?
Yeah, that was that plan that we had sent that showed the after-built. I do have, there's an engineer here today that can speak to this, if you'd like to hear from the, the site engineer that did the work, who could talk about the fill quantities and, and how the site, how it's been raised or not raised. Right in that picture that I'm showing you now, in the middle of that pad is probably where it increased the most, which is at four and a half feet or so from what it was before. But across the six acre site, and, and where we increased is probably 60, 70 feet off the property line. I mean, it's not like we're right up against, there's...
Well, that's not true, though, Dan, because you put that berm for your detention pond right next to the fence. It starts right at the edge of the...
No, it's not, you showed that other picture you had up there, Chris? I mean, we're five to 12 feet.
I drove out there, you're not three feet away, I can tell you that.
It's, it's, well, like he mentioned, the fence is about four to five feet tall, and that berm starts...
Yeah, you're not three feet away from it, that's my point, and you should be five feet away.
I, I believe it's, I'll have to measure it, but I believe it's more than five feet in most of all that area.
Not from the bottom of that dirt pile to his fence, I can guarantee you. I, I went out there and walked this.
Sure. Well, we can, I mean, that's not final, I mean, it's not finished yet either. This, this is the rough grade they put in, they still have the tubes to put in, and we can still reshape that somewhat, too.
The side yard set back five feet, then? If that's consistent with...
Our, our grading ordinance is five foot.
From the property line?
Property line.
Correct.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director.
Is the property line showing somewhere?
I haven't reviewed the plans, Brett's one of them, and I know we haven't, we haven't...
Back for fencing, so that's, that's right exactly on the property line.
And so where would the five feet start? Obviously, at the peak of it or down at the silt fence?
No, at the toe of the slope.
The toe of the slope?
Toe of the slope. They're not supposed to grade anything closer than five feet to the property line.
Does the county have a different, that was my question?
I, I don't know what their ordinance is.
I did check.
I would assume theirs is different than ours, I, I know when we were in...
Yeah, the county and the, the county follows the state, and the state doesn't have any requirement for any holdback from the property line. You can grade right up to the property line according to the county and state.
This memo you received from DGR, are, do you disagree with anything that...
There was a lot of clarification that Olson Engineering sent back in, which we sent back to the city.
So there's an updated...
There's some comments about, yeah, to, to address it. So, yes, there's, there's a lot of information that DGR did not have, of course, of things that already have been changed or addressed prior. So Olson Engineering did send a revision or redline comments back to, to me, which I forwarded to the city as well, that addresses all the concerns. But there was nothing on here that was significant. Many of it was just some, you know, piece of a plan that hadn't been updated yet, because of course, we're not, it's not final either. There is a neighbor here that could speak as well, on our behalf of the project, that's, he actually is probably the most impacted by this. His backyard is where we cut the nine foot out of, that we have put in a retaining wall, and he's a neighbor directly to the east, and his home is the closest home to this site as well. So if you'd like to maybe hear from him, or have some questions for him on the process as well, I think that would be another good opinion to hear.
Hi, I'm Irvin Peckinky. I live right straight east of this project.
Could you give your address, please?
4311 Old Lakeport Road.
Thank you.
And I'm a retired farmer. And as, when I started farming, my dad said one thing, and I remember that very well today. He said, "It's good to have neighbors." That's one thing he told me, exact words. And I know that I would love to see roam grass instead of apartments, but that's the way things happen in life. But I look at the thing that my dad said, and I think that it's nice to have neighbors. And now Dan is my neighbor in this project. And Dan has been very good about stopping in at least three or four times. He's given me his cell phone number, and he's went over a lot of things about this project. I expressed a concern about my trees, and he has worked hard to accommodate me on my trees. So that's about all, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. What, what would the timeline be? Maybe Jeff knows?
One comment. I, I'm paying for the engineer report and everything else. If there's a response to the engineer's report, I think I should see it.
We'll get that for you, there is, yep, we'll get that for you.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Law, and I'm a native Sussexian. In August, my husband and I were coming down Sergeant Road by that four-way stop sign, and a semi truck going to Fleet Farms did not even stop at the stop sign. If my husband would have pulled out, we would have been broadsided and probably killed. Last Tuesday, I had left my job, I work at Target, and I had stopped at that stop sign and headed to, planning on going up Sergeant Road. Right when I was ready to turn, a lady pushing a baby stroller came right out in front of me. If I hadn't stopped, I came within about one foot of hitting her and her child. She was desperately trying to cross that road. That four-way stop sign is not sufficient. We need a stoplight down there. I know stoplights are expensive. That road is, I urge you guys to go down there and just park on the side street and watch the traffic on there. A lot of people aren't even stopping. The person ahead may stop, but the one behind will just kinda skirt through and follow through. And if you notice, now that is four-way traffic. If you are on the outside lane and a truck is on the inside lane, you cannot see Hobby-Lobby stop sign at all. And Hobby-Lobby can go right straight across. We desperately need stoplights down there, on that four-way area. We've got the busiest season coming up with Christmas. That is gonna be an absolute nightmare down there. I have worked at Target for 31 years, I know what Christmas is like. That traffic is going to be crazy. We've got Ultra Beauty on one side, McDonald's, Verizon, Target, Hobby, Hobby-Lobby is on the other side. We also have Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, we have Fleet Farms, we have four dentist offices. We need to do something, please, before somebody gets hurt or killed, please, put stoplights in. Thank you.
We'll duly know, but that, this, we're talking about way up on the hill, it's not anything to do with this, but we'll duly know that, I know where you're, we all know where you're talking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for listening.
Okay.
Well, we are getting proposals to get a study done at that intersection, and also the intersection where the interstate or the bypass has the exit ramp that doesn't have signals. We're getting those two evaluated for signals.
Without, without 14 months of study like you need when I want something done, you're getting that done right away.
No, we're getting studies done.
Chris, I don't show all the more influence you have than a council.
We're, we're not ordering signals, we're getting a study done.
Thank you.
Just a question about process. Where we're at today is the annexation and the zoning plan annexation hearing. We will send this, because it's within two miles of Sergeant Bluff, the city development board, the state, does require review, and their next meeting is November 14th. Once they have that hearing, they'll issue the city a letter stating their approval of any annexation, and after that, we would take it over to the county courthouse to record. So the property, if approved, if approved by the city development board, would not become official until that recording is done at the courthouse. So likely, that'd be somewhere towards the end of November.
So are you saying, and then some of these changes could be made? Is that kind of what you're...
Gonna be changed on the site plan, and if you don't...
Yeah.
If you don't require that site plan to come back to P and Z, and then to the council, in my opinion, you're setting your staff up for failure, because no matter what happens on this, somebody's not gonna be happy at the end of the day. So my, I'm, I think, this doesn't have anything to do with, the most important part is 14, 13, that says the annexation, and that, that'll require the site plan, right? And if that site, site plan can be approved by staff, which I think is a huge mistake, because we have the, we have the ability to ask that to be reviewed by P and Z and the city council.
Correct.
And...
So can we just adjust that or amend that to come here?
If you want to direct staff to bring that site plan before you, yes.
It doesn't have anything to do with 12.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just gonna say that, you know, part of the, of being a developer, working with a boundary of rules that are set by the city is always very beneficial. So when you know what the codes are and you're working with staff to achieve that, that helps the process to go much smoother and quicker. My concern would be is if you open it up again, and then all of a sudden, now it becomes not following the typical design standards that the city has, but now it's opened up again to keep going through a review process, it just opens it up for more and more changes and potential issues that aren't typical from what the city usually encounters.
I don't buy that, Dan, I wanna make sure that... Listen, you, you knew, and so did Lieber, stay five feet off that fence. You guys knew that, I don't care what the county is. You knew you were coming in the city, and you knew that would be our requirement, but yet, instead of adhering to that, you just went ahead and piled that dirt there. And that bothers me, and, and so, no, I'm, and, and if I allow the staff, for my vote, to, to be the one, the one who's not happy, they're gonna, you know what, that's gonna be mad at me. Because at the end of the day, we're the ones that have to answer to the people out there, and I don't wanna put the staff, I'm trying to do you guys a favor, don't think I don't trust you, I just don't think it's...
If the issue is the five foot, can we just...
And there's a lot of, I want, I want the council and the P and Z to be able to review. I think the P and Z, half of your members felt that way from reading the, there was a concern on their part that they would never get another shot at this, from reading the minutes. There were at least a couple that expressed interest in that, so... So for me, that 13 is...
And I, Dan, I hope, too, I, I agree with the mayor. I would just say that that just gives us a chance to make sure that it's done well. And if we're making a decision either way, like the mayor is saying, I would hope that eventually an agreement could be reached between the two of you units. You know what I mean, that at least you understand each other, can agree on what's happening. We just wanted to come before us, so that we can say, "Look, this is the determination, if you're still at odds."
And I have tried that. I've reached out many times, and the communication has stopped about a month ago. We offered to plant shrubs along the fence line to provide some screening, had concerns about his horses. We've offered to make, you know, several accommodations, but are not able to get any response back. So our goal was just to follow the city's standards. You know, we follow the county and state standards with the grading process. If we need to make sure, if we're at four foot now, if we need five foot, we can do that. It's not a, not a huge change. But what we really do need, and I think this will help resolve Larry's concern as well, is we have to move forward so that we can get the storm lines put in for the stormwater. And that way, it'll help alleviate a lot of these concerns that I think he has with stormwater.
And so your argument is you're just saying that this, if we go through this process, it will take more time before you can get that?
Correct. And then, now if it sits all winter long, and comes into spring, we have spring rains, and it floods down to his place, because we can't pump the water out fast enough, it just magnifies the issue and the problem even further, so. And I don't know if there's a happy medium in between there someplace. I know the materials are delivered on site. They're ready to put the storm drain in. We've just been waiting for that November 14th timeline to get this thing approved and moved ahead.
What would the staff recommend? I mean, is there anything that we can do as far as just the stormwater part of that? Nothing. It's kind of either approve and go forward this way, or make an amendment?
I would have to defer the stormwater to engineering. However, just with the process that we have now, typical site plan, P&amp;Z review, city council is about 45 days, generally, so looking at, we're going to be the end of November anyway with the annexation. We may be able to fit that process within that timeframe as well, if the site plan and those items are ready to go.
So he can get his site plan approved about the same time he would anyway.
Correct.
Anyone else be heard on 12?
Well, just depending on the schedules for Thanksgiving and planning and zoning, if that's go back there, then, I mean, it's, now it goes back to planning and zoning, then it goes back to the council. So I don't see how we'd get it done this fall. That's, that would be the dilemma. And then that just makes more concerns down in the future of flooding and other issues that could happen, so. And we have followed, I mean, we've worked with the city. It's gone through DRC already once. And the numbers do work, and it does follow city code. Other than, as the mayor mentioned, if it, we need five foot instead of the four foot, we can clean that edge up. But I don't, in my opinion, that's not a significant enough issue to stop it and not allow the storm drainage to be put in, so we can control the water. Thank you.
We don't have a copy of the response to the DGR engineering report that Mr. Del Perdang provided.
I can get that copy to you.
Has DGR Engineering had a chance to review it, comment on it?
I'm not aware of they have.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we have that? I mean, I appreciate having these reports, but I read through them. I'm thinking, well, the engineers really need to decide that. And I, I'm thinking, I wonder why they wouldn't have been given a copy to see if they agree or disagree. I mean, what I'm looking for is making an informed decision. And so I don't know what their position is on that, and I hadn't seen a copy unless you emailed it out to us, and I just didn't see the attachment.
But I agree, there's a number of issues, starting with Mr. Del Perdang's letter to council, and even through DGR's memo, and until they're met, and I know that they meet city code. I don't, I think it would be unfair to Dan to move forward in, in November. So I don't, I don't know how we can authorize moving forward, Dan. We're not sure it's going to happen.
The project already has been through DRC, and it complies with the city codes. We haven't had the final permit yet, because we haven't been annexed. But we already went through the initial review of the, of the, of the project. The response letter was submitted to Engineering, I think it was just yesterday, so you might not have time to look at it yet. But it was, it was emailed, or maybe it was this morning, or Friday, but would have been to you, Brett?
It's evening this morning.
Okay. Well, anyway, it was emailed to, I think, Chris and some others.
So you're saying the site plan's been re-approved already?
No, I'm saying the site plan has been already through DRC once, and we adjusted comments from DRC. It's already been through that process. We've, we've submitted it three or four times to Engineering. We've updated the water studies three or four times.
And it provides an answer to the questions presented by Mr. Del Perdang, as well as DGR?
Yeah, and perhaps Matt from Olson Engineering is here, who's, who worked on the answer. If you would like to visit with him on some of the questions, you sure could. But, yeah, there was nothing in there that was significant. And they addressed it, addressed the issues and items, and they revised some of their water calculations to show and explain, to explain the responses in the letter. Some of the items in DGR's letter, they didn't know all the information, because all they had was a site plan. So they didn't really know everything had been already done, or the draft they had was an earlier draft. So that's where a lot of it is. But you could sure visit with Matt from Olson if you'd like to a little bit, if you have questions from him, on how the answers were to the letter, and his confidence level of the project and the site. According to city code, you could sure visit with him if you'd like to.
And what I need is for DRC to say that the site plan's been approved, and they're ready to move forward. And until that happens...
I would elaborate on the DRC. We have reviewed it once at DRC. At that meeting, it was denied by pretty much all staff. We assumed it would be, just the preliminary nature of the review. It has not been back. And DRC can't approve anything until it's in the city, anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, so we've submitted the corrections, but they can't officially review it and approve it until it's annexed, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think annexation's the first step that we need to move ahead on, in order to get it to DRC.
That probably won't happen until the end of November.
Well, the annexation is separate than the site plan, I believe, right?
Now, you're saying you won't get approval out of the state before the 14th. Right?
Correct. If the annexation is approved tonight, we would forward that to the city development board. Their next meeting is November 14th. The annexation is not final until it's recorded, which is when we get the letter from them, which very well would be towards the end of November. They don't have a deadline for how quickly they turn that around, but just given the past, it can take a couple weeks.
Right, so even if you gave DRC approval, it's subject to annexation?
Correct.
They can't go out and put a pipe in tomorrow, because they're not in the city even, until the state says they're in the city. They're not in the city. Doesn't matter what we say. Alls we're doing is asking for the state to allow us to annex.
Correct.
So they wouldn't be able to put in the pipe until the end of November, and they got that?
But we can't connect into the city utilities until we get... So it's in the city, correct, and that'd be until it's recorded? I think tonight's issue, if I was, correct me if I'm wrong, was annexation and if the GR zoning is, correct. The site plan review is a whole separate process that the city has. Correct, yeah. Those are the two items tonight, is the annexation, and then what it will be zoned upon annexation. Site plan would follow. Yes.
To be perfectly clear and fairness to you, would you want annexation if the site plan fails?
No.
Here's the problem I'm having before you answer that. Here's the problem I'm wrestling with. We annex, we rezon, I don't want that to be a clear signal that the site plan will be accepted. And it runs a risk of being rejected.
Right.
And so I'm concerned about that, that you'll say, "Well,
No, no.
"If I annex, if I put the pipes in, I did this and I did that." You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I, something is going to be built there within the next 12 months. And we've already spent considerable dollars in the grading and the work, forward to the city's plans and the codes. You know, so we will definitely work diligently to comply with all the codes. So if something needs to be tweaked, we'll tweak it. But the grading work has been done. We've already spent considerable dollars on the plans, the building plans. All that stuff is moving ahead, so we're, we're ready to go.
I just want to make it clear that the annexation process is completely separate apart from the site plan.
Right.
Process. Because I like that idea, actually, of going to planning and zoning and coming to the city council. Not to delay it, but to do a thorough review of it, so all items are addressed. And I don't get caught off guard that, I mean, you know, if the mayor and council want to stay here for a couple of hours, we could walk through this, but I, my preference would be that DGR Engineering is given the response, and they have a chance to respond back. I think that would be fair to all parties.
And I believe the engineering staff with the city was working through that, that if there's any concerns, they were kind of working through the process. So I didn't realize the council wanted to work that process. I thought that was something that the engineers would work through to clarify, you know, is it, is it meeting the stormwater requirements, or is it not? That those are engineering questions, and I thought that at the staff level, they'd be able to say, "Yes, this is correct or not", based on what information's provided. But, yeah, we, we will, we'll move ahead. Like I mentioned, on the site, an easy change for us would be to build larger buildings. That's not what we promised the neighborhood. Our buildings are the size of a duplex. That's all the bigger they are. We could build larger buildings on the site and change the whole design without too much difficulty. But now we're going to have larger buildings, which really, from the neighborhood standpoint, we wanted to have smaller footprints in that area. That's why there's so many buildings. But, I mean, we have the flexibility to tweak and adjust things as we move ahead, if necessary. But the site we have now, we've spent a lot of time and effort in it. I think it fits well in the neighborhood. It fits a need that the city has. It'd be a great addition to the community and a good tax base. We've been working with the city. I would like to have the November 14th timeline, so that we could get the stormwater. I'm mainly concerned about the stormwater drainage. My concern is that Mr. Del Perdang is going to come back here in the spring, or at some point, because we can't control the water that sufficiently without connections to the city. Yes, the water's always flown that way in the past. It's always gone that way. But now it becomes an issue when you start to develop. So we want to be able to control that water in a reasonable fashion. So I would like to be able to move ahead with our plan, get the zoning approved, the annexation approved, and then work with the city staff on the site plan, or back to planning and zoning, if that's the way the council wishes.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that about the drainage, because as you know, I mean, a percentage of that, of your site is going to be hard-surfaced or have buildings on it.
Eventually, yeah.
I'm not sure what that percentage is, and I don't know what the green space is, because we haven't seen the site plan yet. But I'm glad to hear you say that, because the drainage is going to have to be dealt with. And maybe in the meantime, the engineer firms, very good engineering firms that you have involved, can say, "Is there an issue, or is there not an issue? And if there are issues, what are they?" And maybe they'll narrow it down to two or three issues. Maybe they won't have any. I, I don't know. But I'm, I just don't want to mislead you by annexing, and then have something here that still can't be resolved between the engineering firms.
Yeah, I don't see what that would be. I think they've been very thorough in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
On the annexation question number 12, call the roll, please.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
I have a question first, Mayor. I try to vote when it's time to vote, but my question is, if you say the state won't approve this till about November 14th. If the engineering firms raise significant issues between them, can we make our annexation subject to this being resolved by November 14th? Or does it have to be without any conditions at all? I guess that's my question on annexation.
I'm not sure the city development board would want to hear the item, if it was a question whether we're going to bring it in. So they may want to defer it until there's a motion or a finding that the city has approved.
I don't believe that the council can place conditions regarding a vote on annexation.
Okay, I'm going to vote aye, but I want to make it perfectly clear that that's not a green light then, on the engineering issues that have been raised and addressed by the developers' engineers. I want to make it clear that that's still out there for me, and it's also not related to the site plan approval process that will be addressing an item.
Scott?
Aye. 13 is a hearing in ordinance placing a newly annexed, annexed territory described as 4,800 Southern Hills Drive in zone classification general residential. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'm going to move that first.
Second.
And then I'm going to make a motion that the final site plan, so on the amendment first.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify this for myself. So why would we need to rezon it at this point in time, or are you putting the site plan requirement on top of the zoning?
Yep. They have to do it anyway. They have to come back to DRC, is what I read. Or they have to come back to staff to get approval for the final plan.
Right, with your direction, essentially what the process would be, it would still go back to DRC to get the full review there. We would essentially have to deny it because of your direction. It would go to planning and zoning for review. That would include public notice, and then come back to the city council for final review. So we still have those three steps. But your question of why are we rezoning it today, that's so we know what regulations to look at when we're reviewing the site plan. At this point, it would come in as rural residential, which would actually prohibit the development that Dan is requesting. General residential would allow for the apartment condo use.
On item 13, and I know we kind of combined the items, but on item 13, Mr. Del Perdang, do you have anything to add further? Or Mr. Heiser Oak, on item 13, for the rezoning?
Rezoning, that's up to you guys. I think the idea, the council...
Can you come up to the podium? I just want to make sure both sides were clear on what we're doing here.
I have no issue on the zoning, at all. I like the mayor's suggestion on the review process of the site plan.
I believe that the GR zoning would accommodate whatever plans we have put there. You could do single-family homes, townhomes, apartments, the smaller buildings that we have. Or we could do the larger ones, like Summit is the same zoning. So I think that zone would work well for that area.
And that will be shown on your site plan then?
Yeah, we are, yeah, that's, that's how it was designed and built. The only concern, again, I have is just what this timeline does. I don't know, someone said 45 days. Is that a realistic timeline, to be able to complete all these steps that you've mentioned, so that we can get that stormwater taken care of yet this fall? Typically, yeah. Forty-five days would be from the moment that you apply to that site plan. So depending on how soon you're ready to apply for that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just say as well, if I could just say one more thing, Mr. Del Perdang, I hope that you can have a conversation with them moving forward. It sounds like the council is really trying to make this a fair process, so that everyone can go through the necessary steps to address those things. And I'm not saying that you haven't, or have, I don't, I don't, I'm not very trusting anymore behind the seat. So, but I would just say if you could continue to work together, I think, it sounds like you're both reasonable men. I would just hope that that, that conversation can continue as we try to make this decision as well.
The only thing I have to say is, I've lived there 30 years. I've never once had a water problem, ever, on that land. I'm not saying there hasn't been some, I have never seen it, but I've never had a problem. And one other thing, we talked about the site plan and the shrubs. My concern is, 106, 108 apartments, you've got kids. I've had horses for 30 years, and, and a shrub is not going to stop kids moving their horses.
And we, I will speak for myself, I understand that. I'm just saying, development does happen. That land is going to be developed.
I'm not...
And so I think he's just trying to be as accommodating as possible.
I've got 16 acres of probably the most prime commercial property in the city of Sussex. So I know about development, so...
Yep.
And that property will be developed, too, just not today.
I was just saying, making the point that my hope is that communications can proceed.
I'm fine with communications.
And I'm willing, Larry, whatever you come up with for an option of shrubs, trees, whatever we want to do there.
Well, is it going to be retaining wall? Is it going to be retaining?
We can...
We're going to go to DRC.
Yeah.
So you both have your say there. I wish you'd let Mr. Del Perdang know when it's going to DRC, please. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any comments now after those remarks?
Michelle Bossenell is Chair of Planning and Zoning. I don't really have too many comments. The item in front of us was the rezoning, and we, you know, the same concerns and comments came up that seemed more on the site plan level, and you, and you could see that in the minutes of discussion. You know, we talked about if the site plan should come out to planning and zoning, and I think, I think it's a good idea that if it does, so.
Now on the motion.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
I'll move to waive the statutory rule.
Thank you.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Scott?
Right.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. 14th Attorney in Orange vacating a portion of First Street at 101 Court Street and 100 Virginia Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Yep, this is just a request to vacate a portion of First Street along 101 Court Street and 100 Virginia Street. The patient would like to add the right-of-way to the property as part of future development. It went through planning and zoning, recommendation. There weren't any comments from anyone in the audience.
Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
No, I'll move it.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
No, I'll move it.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Hearing in ordinance rezoning 101 Court Street, P and Z recommends approval deferred from October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. I'll move it.
Second.
Yep, again, this is just in the same area rezoning from GI to, to general commercial in that area. Again, there weren't any comments from the audience or from the public at the meeting, and it did go through planning and zoning, five to zero.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
No, I'll move it.
Second. Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Sixteen's a hearing in ordinance vacating in East West Alley at thirteen twelve Grandview Boulevard. P and Z recommends a denial. First consideration passed October eighth. Second consideration passed October fifteenth.